Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting to Order. Because I don't have a gavel.
Get the woman a gavel.
I know.
For heaven's sakes. What was the gavel story?
Camisade.
Used to.
Okay, so on the agenda today, we have recognition of National Merit Scholars and we also have other recognition. Could we just quickly do the retirement?
Yay.
All right, and I'll ask Kathy Douglas to join me up here.
I really tried to slip out the back this summer.
Not quite.
I tried.
So Kathy Douglas has been the Director of NCAT for many, many years, and we usually don't bestow a gift to other town departments when they retire, but Kathy has done so much work helping showcase the great things that are happening in our Northborough and at Algonquin to the community. So hours and hours of support. She helped with the Start Time Initiative, the Gonplex, many others, many other events. So I just want to take a minute and thank you for all of your dedication and commitment to the school district and to NCAT, and we have a small token of our appreciation.
Yes. I love you all and I miss you already.
And you're out the door.
And I'm out the door.
Well, thank you very much for making the trip back so we could bestow this gift on you and to also give you our heartfelt thanks because it has not only just, you know, our school committee meetings, but also I know that my son took classes and it was because of NCAT and all your equipment and all your, everything that was just made it possible, so.
Can I just add one clarification? The cake isn't for you, it's for the National Merit Scholars.
There's a one corner just for you.
Kathleen, I'd just like to thank you. I don't know where Greg says you're not one of us because you belong to the town, because I thought you were on our school department, because I've seen you at so many meetings, just like Kathleen said, if it's a candidate's night, if it's something for the music department, anything, you're always here. Your presence has been so wonderful, and anything that you've done has been for the betterment of the students in Northborough and Southborough. So from my heart, I'd like to thank you for everything you did and your dedication and your love retirement.
Thanks for making a phone for us here. You always make us feel welcome here, and we are very grateful to be able to be so close with the students and staff.
Two-way street.
Good luck.
Okay, then we can move on to the recognition of the National Merit Scholars.
Sure, maybe I'll stand to do the following, and as I'm going through, so the trick of this event is that it's an evening event, and you've already had a very long day here at school, and we invite you out and thank you to come and be recognized. I'm going through my commendation awards, and I'm missing some, and I don't know why, but I'm going to announce everybody, and I'll announce the folks who I have commendations for, and if you don't get, if I don't have your card with you, with me, my certificate, I will have you come to the office tomorrow. So I apologize for that. That seems to be an oversight from my office. So just to share with you what this award represents, the National Merit Scholars are really, there's two categories here. So we have semifinalists for National Merit Scholarships, and that means they were in the top 1% of all students who took the PSATs. There's only about 16,000 in the entire country that get recognized as National Merit Scholar semifinalists. And then we also have commended scholars who represent the next layer after that, and those are students who finish in the top 2% to 3% of all students in the whole country who took the PSATs, and there are about 34,000 students across the whole country, the many millions who took that exam. So what I'll, we have, we know who's here today. I'm going to ask you to stand and be recognized, and I'm going to come and find you and give you your certificate. If I announce you and I don't have a certificate for you, I apologize again. I'll have my assistant reach out to you and provide you that tomorrow, okay? So we have Dee Gupta.
Principal Bevan, can I just say a few remarks?
Sure, yes, all right.
So I just want to address the parents, because I just want to thank you for your efforts as parents supporting your children, that your children have demonstrated a lot of hard work, effort, and perseverance. Receiving this recognition is not easy, and we think about preparing students for the next level of whether it's college or career. I think this is one metric that shows that they're heading in that direction. So I want to thank the parents for all the effort and support, and congratulate the students on all of your hard work and effort leading up to this recognition. I'm sure there have been many late nights, a lot of study sessions, probably a little bit of stress at some point, but you are to be congratulated, and on behalf of the school committee, we congratulate you and thank the parents for their efforts.
And this is the only meeting of the whole year where we have cake, and so we always look forward to this meeting, and if I had to choose between a certificate and cake, I think I'd choose the cake, but you get to have both tomorrow. All right, so Dee Gupta is going to be recognized. Catherine Michelle. And Willow Paradise. So I'd like to announce the others who couldn't be here tonight. Did I miss anybody here who's here personally? And thank you to Kath to help me figure that out. I'm going to announce the others who couldn't join us here tonight. We had semifinalists, Janet Liu Guan. We have commended, and the rest are commended scholars. Those were Cole Gowdy, Henry McLaren, Andrew Moore, Lopa Madura Nioji, Rihanna Patel, Alexa Pelham, Marie Roberts, Sasha Shadevasser, Irene Shin, Nicholas Southie, Eric Sun, Luke Utshneider, Catherine Wu, Brandon Yan, Kevin Yao, and Sutan Zhang. So let's have a round of applause for those. Again, congratulations, everybody. I'm so proud of you all, and I'm excited for this great accomplishment.
Now, based on the numbers, I've done some math, I think you each can have a two-by-two inch minimum, so please join us to celebrate the students' achievements with cake, and we have water and.
And we'll take about a.
And chat.
Thank you very much for having such a great time with all of our National Merit Scholars, but it's time to get down to business. All right, audience sharing. Nope, okay, then we will move on. Action on the minutes, minutes of September 20th, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
I think that we approve the open meeting minutes of September 20th, 2023.
Second. Second move by Paul, seconded by Joan. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Thinking about chocolate.
Educational policy, none. New business athletics update. Oh, yay.
Right. First.
You're first. Relatively.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and as is the norm with open athletics, our student athletes continue to represent their school communities with outstanding performances on the field and continue commitment to academic and athletic excellence. Just a quick fall breakdown, we had 401 athletes participate in this fall, and at this time last year, we had about 390, so a slight increase in the enrollment numbers for athletics. Looking forward, in November, we will organize our National Letter of Intent Day, and this is when we recognize our student athletes this year who have the opportunity for their academic and athletic career at collegiate level. About open athletics, it was notified that we will receive the 2022, 2023 MIA Sportsmanship Honor Roll recognition for the third year in a row. This recognition is awarded for schools who do not have any student athletes or coaches disqualified or suspended for the athletic contest. At the beginning of the fall, it was a tough start with the postponement due to severe weather. It seemed like every other day, a severe thunderstorm came rolling in, and then in addition to that, with excessive heat. But the students and the coaches did an amazing job adjusting to the last-minute changes in practices and game schedules. And as we anxiously awaited the release of our new state-of-the-art complex, the Gonplex, some of the fall teams had to, were impacted by the construction and renovation project and were planning other local high schools, like Boys and Girls Soccer, JV Football, JV and varsity field hockey, but I believe Principal Bevan mentioned this, we shared this with you the last school committee. However, on October 10th, our multi-purpose field opened, which was extremely exciting, and there was a lot of excitement for the athletes who are so happy to be back on campus, especially for those teams that were affected, and especially for the seniors. Our Boys and Girls Soccer teams held their first home and night games back here. They were also able to hold their senior nights with families and friends. Field hockey returned to campus after eight years of being at another facility, and our JV1 football team is no longer playing their home games on the road and will have their first home game this Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, versus Wachusen. I do want to thank Superintendent Martino, Assistant Superintendent Boyd, Principal Bevan, Central Office, members of the school committee and Athletic Complex Committee in both communities in Northborough and Southborough for all the support during the approval and now the renovation process. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to academic excellence and athletic excellence, and all the hard work that has been done behind the scenes to make our new athletic complex a reality for our students, our student athletes, and our communities. Where we stand today with our sports team, football's been in some close competitive games, but hasn't been able to come on top yet. I say yet, but their next game is Friday, Wachusen, and then they're back home the following week versus Leominster. Boys soccer is 8-5-2, is ranked 31st in the state, and girls soccer is 7-3-4 and is ranked 13th in the state. Boys and Girls Cross Country, both went 4-0 in the regular season meets and looking forward to competing in the league and sectionals and state meets. Field hockey is 11-2-2 and ranked eighth in the state. Boys golf just finished in second place in the mid-watch leagues today, and they finished the regular season 10-6 and is qualified for the state tournament. Girls volleyball are 13-3 and are ranked fourth in the state. Cheerleading, our game day, participated in their first two home games, and competitions will begin for them this Sunday when they travel to Wachusen Invitational. And lastly, our Unified Basketball. And lastly, our Unified Basketball played at their first game at Shepherd Hill, and they'll open up with a home game tomorrow versus Shrewsbury at three-thirty, and they will continue to participate in league and state's competition. Our Uniform Grant, just a quick update through BSN that we received at the end of last year, is in full swing, it has taken some time to design and produce some of the new uniforms because of the quantity that we are requesting. However, the uniforms will start to roll out in December for some of our winter sports teams, and by the end of the year, we will have new uniforms for close to twenty teams, which is outfitting three levels for some sports, and this is all paid for through the BSN Uniforms Grant that we were awarded for up to fifty thousand dollars last year. Our impact testing is not mandatory for all of our, for grades nine through twelve, who are participating in athletic activity, extracurricular activity, in advance of the first season, and our athletic trainer oversees our impact testing as a resource for our coaches, students, and our families regarding the new practice, and we're close to hundred percent for participation for this fall. And it may change a little bit as we rotate into the winter because we are multiple-sport athletes, but it was a great, great start, a great beginning. I'd be remiss if I did not thank our ARHS Boosters Club, on behalf of the entire Athletic Department, I would like to extend a special thanks to our Booster Club for its continued involvement in the athletic program with this level of commitment and support and place, it's no surprise to see Algonquin Athletics experience such tremendous accomplishments on and off the field. And that's my fall update, because we are a little less than a month away before we start winter, which is November twenty-seventh, and in about two weeks, I'll start planning for next fall. So I do want to thank you for your time and tonight for allowing me to provide a brief update on where we stand and, and all the support, and we hope to see you at the games in our new facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Anybody go to any games on the new field? Paul?
I did go to a couple of games on the new field, it was awesome, but that's not what I want to talk about. The impact testing is just, that was just great news to hear, you're near a hundred percent, and I see Mary Ellen Duggan back there, and I know, Mary Ellen, you had a lot to do with that, getting that in our policy, so thank you, thank you, Mike, anyone, or everyone who made that happen, I think that's just a great step forward.
I agree. Sounds like it's all good news, and we can't wait to hear your next report.
They just make one, one comment with comments, and just thank Mike for his flexibility, not having access to fields and stadiums is really challenging. Mike was very proactive this past spring, anticipating different scenarios, so I just want to thank you for your diligence and planning, and your commitment to trying to make it as good of a fall season as you could, given the construction project.
Thank you.
And if I can just put a plug in, I don't think anybody, any of the following people would see this or hear about this, but our fellow schools around in the area that have kindly hosted our, our home games at their facilities have been, really, that's really going over and above, and I think that speaks to the relationships we have professionally, and especially, Mike, with your area A.D.s to use the facilities at Westboro and Shrewsbury and other places to, to allow our kids to maintain, you know, to keep playing and playing safely, and, you know, those are places that were mildly impacted or inconvenienced, but we couldn't have done it without their help. So it was really a team lift, including like folks at Shrewsbury, for example, like Jay Costa, so if you can pass along our thanks to those guys and women, that'd be great, Mike.
So we didn't forfeit one game?
Nope.
Excellent. That's outstanding.
Thank you, Mike.
So will the, the varsity football team will not play here at all?
They will not play here at all, just because our multi-purpose field can't accommodate the varsity football, so they're still continuing to schedule at a neutral high school.
But we were gonna play the Thanksgiving Bowl, no?
Thanksgiving is on the road at Westboro.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought it was here, okay.
Yep.
That's lucky.
And I'd just like to say, there was an article in the Community Advocate on October sixth about when the pickleball courts opened up, the students had a tournament that they, that they started, and it looked like it was a great turnout and a lot of enthusiasm, so thank you very much for everything and the enthusiasm from the principalship and the Athletic Department, the superintendent, supporting the students in their endeavors.
That it, okay, thank you very much. All right, next is legislative update.
No updates at this time.
Okay, then next is MAS, MASC joint conference.
So in your packet are the eight resolutions being considered at this upcoming joint conference, I just want to highlight a couple key resolutions that I think are important to support as a school committee. The first really is around investigations around bidding for transportation, many districts are bidding for transportation and are only receiving one bid, so it's not competitive. This resolution would allow the auditor to investigate practice, bidding practices of transportation providers and make recommendations so that it truly is a fair process in as the procurement law has intended. The second resolution is around regional transportation, so we're supposed to get a hundred percent regional transportation reimbursement that has fluctuated over the years, I don't think there has ever been a year where we've received a hundred percent. This resolution speaks to the difference that is not reimbursed, allows regional districts to charge that amount, so it's a hundred dollars, for example, and we get eighty-five percent regional transportation reimbursement, we would then be able to charge our families fifteen, fifteen dollars for transportation. Obviously, that's just us, you know, using numbers to just illustrate what we're, we'd be allowed to do. And the other resolution is Mass School Building Authority, so MSBA paused its accelerated repair project of funding as a result of kind of the inflationary impacts of ongoing building projects. So this resolution asks MSBA to restart accelerated repair program. It also asks that it removes the cap of eight hundred million dollars, plus either the rate of growth in the dedicated sales tax revenue, to really increase that fund for districts to do accelerated repair projects or new building projects. And then lastly, Resolution Eight is really around advocating for safe storage of firearms, so making sure that our families are getting, and students are getting information about how to store firearms safely. I think the statistic is pretty significant that twelve hundred children and teens die by gun suicide each year as a result of firearms not being stored properly. So this just would allow us to have a concerted effort to advocate for families, making sure that their firearms are safely locked up. And those are the resolutions that I thought were important to consider.
Okay, well, the other, does anybody have any questions or comments? Or additions? Then the next thing is to appoint a delegate. Anyone, anyone?
I'm going Thursday and Friday.
Oh, you are?
Happy to serve in that role.
When is the deleg-
It's Wednesday.
There you go. It's my birthday, I don't think I'll be there.
So they shifted the delegation, it's typically on Friday.
Yes.
Now it's on Wednesday.
Anyone want to run to the Cape on Wednesday? Apparently, they completely redid that Hyannis Conference Center.
Number eight?
Eight, nine, ten. Gonna be there?
So just a general comment around what if we don't have representation at this delegation, do you want to, you usually have a spiel around. It's really not that impactful because of the time it takes for legislative initiatives to move through the process.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I would say that probably not one of these resolutions will actually be the same resolution that gets passed or fails, because they rewrite and they bring back feedback from their constituents and they, so it is, it is, I think the value in it is to, to start the conversation between school committees and their legislators. So I'm not that concerned, but if you're so inclined to be interested in MASC, it is a great learning tool.
And I'll just add to, North Borough Pre-K through eight school committee and the South Borough Committee are sending members to the conference, and they will be participating in the delegation, conversation, and discussion, they are advocating for the same resolutions that I reviewed today.
Okay, well, the plans change, and if you'd like going, let me or Greg or you. Okay, distribution of the twenty-three, twenty-four department presentation schedule.
So in your packet, Principal Bevan provided an update on the presentation schedule, so this will be our guide to future meeting agendas.
And, oh, approval of grants and donations, and there are a bevy of them, would, would you like to sort of give us an overview and then we can vote on them all at once?
I will turn it over to Principal Bevan, since he's more familiar with all of the amazing grants that have been awarded.
Yeah, sure, and this is always a fun part of the meeting when we share how much support we've received from our community, so the first is, and, and is it okay if I go through each of them and then pitch it back for approval? So we are receiving, or potentially receiving, an honorarium of five hundred dollars from the University of Pittsburgh, because a few dozen of our teachers are participating in a training to find out the best practices for supporting our LGBTQ plus youth, and that, those trainings are online and happening currently, and in, as a part of engaging in that study, we are getting five hundred dollars to use in a way that we would see fit. I would anticipate we would ask the people who have participated in that training how they think that money can best be spent to support our LGBTQ plus students. The next one is an MIA, MIIA grant for risk management initiatives and priorities, I think that's, is that yours, Keith, maybe you can speak to that just very briefly?
Yeah, so very briefly, Mike Gorman does apply for this grant yearly, and this year, the focus will be on boiler room upgrades, including like CO2 detector, valve shut offs, and other type of safety equipment connected to our larger equipment, and, and secondly, doing some thermographic inspections of, related to our building envelope and other systems, so that we can target areas throughout the building that might be compromised in different ways. So we are moving forward with that work and yielding some positive results to help us, you know, focus on our renovations and repairs, preventative maintenance mostly, so this is a year that Mike, Mike gets this grant annually, and we put it to good use.
So congratulations to Mike Gorman for taking the initiative, it's very helpful and, you know, again, becoming more efficient and improving our systems. Keith, do you want to take the next bullet as well?
I don't know. Oh, the laptops, yes, so I do want to thank Ryan O'Leary for his continued work, one of the things that he has been really working on in the last six to eight months is to try to secure additional devices through different means, so we were fortunate enough to jump on a donation from, what was the name of the school? Chelmsford School District, they were offering devices that were not end of life, and then wound up being devices that were extended life, so we benefited from that, and two hundred of those devices were brought here to Algonquin, and are really helped to offset the daily needs of the building, so all students can have a very capable device. So Ryan was thrilled about it, he actually filled his entire vehicle with two hundred of these and drove down Route four ninety-five, and he very proudly took a picture of that. So all three districts did benefit from it, but in this case, Algonquin received two hundred of those devices, and now because of this extended life of those, they didn't just end their usability in the next six months, we got extended, so we kind of won the lottery on that one. It's a double donation, I suppose.
And we've not heard from Chelmsford.
We said Chelmsford publicly.
We won't return their calls, we're just-
No, that's not-
Our robotics team has received a donation from IPG Photonics for twelve hundred dollars. Additionally, we received a package that we didn't anticipate from the NFL with a huge amount of NFL flag football gear, playbooks, and other materials valued at four hundred dollars that our coaches, our P.E. classes are very excited to begin using, and it actually just allows us to do, add more and better materials to a flag football unit that was already happening. The Hack Club, Hack Club event has provided, GitHub has provided a hundred dollar donation for food during the Hack Club event, and then finally, an individual named Marjorie Caldwell, who is from Tatnuck Books, has provided a donation of sixty dollars to benefit the Unified Singing Club for their performance at the book club, at the bookstore, I'm sorry. And that is the total, the totality of-
And that totality is thirty thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. So, do I hear a motion?
As presented.
She's asked, presented.
Yeah, presented. I make a law to present it from the topic, so like, twenty-two. Seconded. Send them as presented, yes, we get it, yes. Move by Kathy, seconded by Kathleen. Any questions? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Okay, Superintendent's report to the committee.
So I will turn it over to Principal Bevan for his monthly principal's report.
Good evening, everyone, so we are in about the sixth week of school, and, and things are going along nicely, and Cass, who is gonna start us off by giving her report, do you want to steer from that? Steer, so if you just advance, you'll get to your slide first.
So here are some of the current events this past month, at the Club of Straby Enzo, we had seventy-eight clubs with the entire student population there, all signing up for different clubs, and going around, each club had a poster in a different area where they were set up, some clubs running activities, giving out candy, and overall, just trying to recruit people to join. The pickleball tournament was already mentioned, but that had a great turnout, lots of students from every grade, and it was great to see people using pickleball courts for the first time. The Algonquin Reading Center ran two separate college essay workshops last night in this library, and helped prepare students for different stages of the qualification process. Some students were set up with like Common App accounts, and others were in their final editing process for college essay, but overall helped a lot of students. The robotics competitions began this past weekend, they are currently in like the friendly stages where, I'm not actually computing, they're just going around for fun pretty much, and their robot did get destroyed, I believe, but, but I heard they had a great time. GONPLEX is, has begun opening, and the first field was obviously talked about, and Wellness Days are now happening, the second Wellness Day will be on Halloween, so license is safe with that. For upcoming events, this, between now and like the next meeting or beyond, we have Homecoming, possibly, we'll see what the junior class plans for that, based on, football games are all at Westboro, not here. Winter Ball, planning has fully begun, and tickets should be going out within next month, and Seachem Coffee House is on the twenty-sixth, and I believe all of you are invited if you're interested, as you haven't been before. But it's just a bunch of students that perform music and speak poetry, and it's a great time. The sports finals are approaching, as was also discussed, the winter season is starting within the next few weeks, so overall, a lot of fall sports will be doing very great. The musical, The Addams Family, is getting ready for their tech week in the next two weeks, which will be starting pretty much tomorrow night, but they're very excited. And pep rally has been planning, which is normally around Thanksgiving, but the spirit of the stuff goes on a week or two before that. We had a student survey with a hundred and eighty responses this past month, and- And some of the main themes were student stress, which is high, but that's typical for most high schoolers and, uh, should be at pretty manageable levels. Most students rated it about a three or a four out of five, um, of, in terms of high stress. Wellness days have been, seen mostly positive feedback. Most teachers following rules. Some students complained the rest of the week was busier for them with more, but, um, overall, a newer experience, more students. Wifi, again, not perfect, but better. And there have been some minor P A system issues over the past, uh, few weeks, but I think it's been pretty good this past week.
Yeah.
Uh, for the workload, lots of tests, lots of homework, pretty standard. I've heard that freshmen are adjusting pretty well for that, so it's good to hear. Excitement for upcoming events is definitely present. And of course, fall is always busy for lots of student-organized events, activities, and just student life in general. And for goals already expressed by administration, a lot of students were concerned about things like hiring diversity and inclusivity and being environmentally conscious, which are all things that people are aware. Um, these were some main questions that we've gotten as a group and have heard around the school the past few weeks. So is life gonna get any better this year? Um, I think we're, we've pretty much leveled out. And I've heard for the wifi, like, things can always improve, but we're probably at a pretty good performance right now. And Homecoming, of course, is possible. And then, of course, the Northboro Schools changed their Halloween policy and how that will impact Algonquin, if at all. And the Gonplex schedule for opening, it is still in the works. And do any of you have any questions?
What is the concern around Halloween?
Uh, so the Northboro Schools have, like, severely limited, um-
Not this year, but they-
Yes, but the, the policy was released. There were a few articles circulating among the student population in Algonquin, just about Northboro.
I think the question you intuited is, is will that impact whether or not we support, uh, like, school-wide Halloween? Yes.
Yeah, and I've had a chance to talk to the superintendent in Northboro.
One-on-one?
One-on-one. A lot of, a lot, a lot of chats.
Took them for a walk.
Uh, and again, the genesis of around Halloween was really around loss of learning, kind of disruption to, to the school day. And, you know, there was a percentage of students who didn't feel comfortable participating for a variety of reasons. So the Halloween parade is back on. It's going to be the first twenty minutes of the school day. So we're gonna, going to work with Mary Ellen and do some type of walk to school in your costume event. Do the parade when they arrive to school, um, twenty minutes, and then continue our learning. So what, answer is no. It will not impact Algonquin.
But what happens for Halloween at the high school level?
It's been, the past few years, been kind of loose, not really organized. This year, I believe it's been a little bit more structured with, um, like, a student-organized costume contest and prizes.
I would go so far as to say, and I'm sorry, I know there's a hand in the air, teacher's participation in it has been, in fact, often higher than students. And, uh, there has not been a, a highly organized student effort, but in departments, often departments will do a whole team effort. And so I think something about that lends itself to higher participation rates. Teachers love dressing up and, and kids generally do, but I, we can talk about how to really get student interest in this because I love Halloween and I think it'd be fun.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one correction. Uh, as a member of the Northboro K A School Committee, it's not a policy because the school committee is in charge of the policies, but we do not have a policy about Halloween. We have a, a policy on holidays and celebrations. And, and the preview of the parade was not under the auspices of the school committee. So it wasn't Holloway, Halloween, policy was just the Halloween parade. And so I just wanted to make that correction to you and to the, uh, to the viewing audience so they understand.
Yeah, any other questions for Cass? Thank you very much. It was excellent.
Thank you, Cass. Great job. Okay. So as Cass mentioned, uh, we had our first Wellness Day. And Cass and I have been communicating and finding out what the students' responses have been and looking ahead to further improve, especially coming into our next one, which is on, uh, thirty-first, of course. Um, we anticipated and it came true, and we're looking at ways to avoid it. Um, by putting in the Wellness Day in, uh, and not necessarily eliminating assessments. It like just simply nudged assessments out to other parts and some of those end up being, you know, more populated with assessments on the days leading up to or the days after. And that's no, not the result of any ill intent. It's just teachers moved the same number of assessments to different parts of those around those same times. So I think the experience students had was, you know, an increase in assessments before or after. And we're looking at ways to-